United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I have one regarding Sevita Health and a pending application.
I'd also like to let everyone know that Alderman Small is joining us by phone this evening. Until he arrives, he'll be here shortly.
Hello.
Hello. Where would you see that being added? Is that a...
Wherever it's your pleasure. We can see you in your business.
Okay. Great. Do we have any visitors who are here not specifically for an item on the agenda? I think not. Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Paul makes that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any additions, corrections, changes?
I have one.
Okay.
First one I've ever done, I think.
Go for it.
Page two, long-term budget, fourth line up from the bottom, six working from the left. Perimeters should be parameters.
Excellent.
That's it.
Anything else? I had one on the first page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down. Pre-k through 4th grade attend the elementary school and grades five through 12 be consolidated at the high school rather than attend. Go ahead.
Grades five through eight will attend a middle school and nine through 12, high school, all existing under the same roof. Five, fifth graders not going to be attending high school.
Correct.
Or consolidating it under high school.
Right.
That was a major point. Five through eight will attend a newly created middle school.
Five through eight? A what school?
A middle school, a separate middle school, and nine through 12, a high school, but they'll be sharing the same building.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did anyone have any questions on the warrants that have been circulated? Right, moving forward. Any comments? We sort of covered this, but does anyone want to make a comment not related to the agenda while we have the opportunity? Moving on to business. A, Park Street Streetscape Project.
Yes, Sarah Shroop and Sarah Cowan are here from St. Paul's. I don't know how you'd like to proceed, Sarah. Would you like to kick things off or would you like me to?
Yeah, I have a handout.
Good.
Thank you all for allowing us to come before you today. I'm Sarah Strout. I live on Green Street and Sarah and I are here on behalf of St. Paul's Episcopal Church. If you don't know, St. Paul's is right next to us. Yeah. Shall I hold the phone while I talk?
That's actually, they passed that down there.
Okay.
Put him in his seat.
Hello, Dave.
Hi, thank you, sorry.
That's great. So, we are here today to update you on the progress of a project that we've been working on for several years and to make a specific request. The project that we've been working on is what we are calling our Streetscape Project. We are expanding public green space in downtown for Jans. City council members may remember that a year and a half ago, Sarah and I came to you with really nothing more than a bunch of big ideas. Today, I'm very happy to report that we've made substantial, specific progress on the Streetscape Project. As you'll see on the handout in front of you, there are really three different facets to the project. There's a sidewalk that is adjacent to Park Street leading over to the green. There's repair and replacement of the stained glass windows that look out on that public green space. And then there's re-landscaping of the lawn right there to invite more seating and more public recreation. The sidewalk is done, the windows are in progress, and we're raising funds for the re-landscaping. That's the shorthand version of the detail that's on the handout. What I'm here to talk to you tonight about is the sidewalk. The improvements in the sidewalk would have been impossible without the support of the city. We were grateful to the city manager for securing a much lower estimate for the project. Originally, we went into asking the state for funding with an estimate of $92,000. The total cost was $35,000. The work was completed quickly in May and June, and the sidewalk and the rock wall are very attractive. Tonight, I come to you with a question also and a request in addition to the update. When we came to city council last February, we had a lot of discussion about the terms of the agreement, and the city council passed a specific motion. And that motion was based on a bid of $92,000. So I believe we might need to reinterpret city council's will, given that the cost was much lower. My question to city council, as stated on the handout, is this: Did the February 18th motion approve a specific amount to be allocated or did it approve a funding formula? Now, if you read the language of the minutes, and that's the first bullet point on your handout, clearly the city council approved both, but that's based on an old number. So what do we do now that we have a new number? Tonight, Sarah and I would like to ask the city council to amend its February 13th, 2018 motion to remove responsibility from St. Paul's for reimbursing the city for 25% of the remaining amount. I believe that you can read the February 13th motion to say that the city council approved, regardless of anything else, city council approved spending $23,000 from the water tower fund. There are three reasons that you might want to approve my request. The first is this is a win for our new city manager. The city agreed to spend $23,000, even if the city pays for half of the project, that's $17,500. That's a savings of $5,500 because of that lower estimate. Second, having started the project with the city on the sidewalk, we have continued on our own and we have incurred new and rather substantial financial obligations. The windows are in progress. We're still raising $5,000 to finish those by the end of 2019. We are working with United Way as of last month to raise money for the re-landscaping, for the green space. If we repay $8,900 to the city, then first, we actually don't have that money on hand, so it would come out of our endowment, and second, any money that we do raise moving forward doesn't go into re-landscaping, it goes into repaying the city. The third reason to support my request is that the wall and the sidewalk are on city property. We looked at the survey of the land before we applied for the grant with the Virgin's partnership. As noted by former city manager Mel Hawley in the February 27th meeting, there is precedent for this. A Methodist church and 135 Main Street did not pay for 25% of the project. And what the city then did is that they fronted them $8,700, which is almost exactly the amount that we are asking for. That's the end of my comments, and we welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you. So, I'd actually like to hear anything you might have to add.
Sure, thank you very much, Sarah. So, Sarah is absolutely right about everything she has said. The original estimate was $92,500. We got it done for 35 and change. I applied the same ratios in requesting a repayment schedule from St. Paul's that we had discussed back in February, which was 50% grant, 50% water tower, with us lending 25%, 50% of that 50% to St. Paul's to cover their end. There was a mix-up in my communication to Sarah in August in that I had suggested a three-year repayment, but the council had discussed a 10-year repayment. We were just using kind of best practices that we've applied in the past. I agree, again, with Sarah's assertion that this has been a win for the city in total and all of its residents. The only thing I would say is that's probably not where I would have spent money. You know, we have over half a million dollars worth of sidewalk work we need to do, and I probably just wouldn't have prioritized that. And I don't think that the city would have...I'm not sure that the city would have chosen to just to have put a wall in there as part of a sidewalk project. That aside, I think the project has come out great, and St. Paul's board and my office have worked very well to get through this in a timely manner. That's all I have.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, you are asking us to forgive the balance that...yes, that is correct, which is $8,750?
I think in a minimum, asking for clarification of whether that was an amount that the city approved or a funding formula.
Right.
If the city believes that it was a funding formula, I think I would, we would still request that for a nonprofit religious organization, which is different than a for-profit organization like Hired Hand or The Antidote, that there is precedent to forgive that loan.
Okay. Comments from anyone?
So, the grant is covering approximately $17,500?
It reimburses, it's a matching grant.
So, assuming roughly $35,000 project, they're putting in $17,500. We had authorized up to $23,000, $120,000 for our part.
Correct.
So, we're still going to save money on what we planned on doing.
That is correct.
I see that there's the percentage, I see that there's the money, and I think we were willing to spend up to that amount of money, so I'm okay with staying with dollar amount.
I think that what we ought to do first is considering he was the one that made the motion, we ought to ask all what his intent was with regard to that motion, and we all ought to individually speak with regard to how we understood it when we voted on it. That's where we start.
I can't do that, though, because I wasn't here then.
Fair enough.
And I can't remember that far back.
So, well, that's fine, but looking at that, how do you interpret that? Is it a funding formula or is it a dollar amount?
I think it was a dollar amount, based on what we knew. But I agree with her. I think we should have. Because it's a savings for us either way. And she is right, it is our sidewalk.
Any other comments?
I would interpret it and how I voted on it was it's a funding formula, notwithstanding any of the other arguments that you've made, which are a separate piece with regard to us. So, that was my understanding of it. The other arguments, we would take separately. We have to start there.
I thought it was a formula also.
As did I, and I think our precedent, when we've done this in the past, just reinforces that position. I mean, we use this sort of formula in the past. So, I think there's probably consensus that that was our intent, that we would do this funding formula as it is. So I think now what you're asking is a separate question. And I'm interested to hear how the council feels about that.
So, I wasn't at these meetings. But relative to the Methodist church sidewalk and some other ones, was that ever discussed as part of this, given the fact that they were nonprofit churches or not? Was that ever part of the discussion?
I...
It was.
Yeah.
Okay.
I recall that the issue did come up.
Okay.
Yes.
Jeff, you said there was a precedent set. Was that with businesses, though, or not? A non-for-profit church?
Well, that's another question.
That's what I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that does change things a little bit.
It does. It potentially can, yeah. I agree.
Well, the third part I was saying, I think there probably is a formula, and we're basing those numbers on the original bid. But I also think we were willing to take up the $23,000, and that was, we were okay with that number. So the fact that we're actually not going to have to pay that is good, and so we're paying less than we had anticipated paying, and if that means that they get to put their money towards the other aspects of the green, I'm okay with that.
Okay. How do you feel, Lynn?
I'm actually okay with it, too. You know, I think the example was under Jen's Day. Everybody sat on that wall, and it was beautiful, and people loved it. They sat up on the grass and had dinner.
As well as Friday night?
Yeah, that's what I meant, on Friday night, when the dance was going on. So, you know, it is an asset to the city. I hope we don't make this mistake again, you know, or make sure that we understand what we're doing, that it is a formula. But under the circumstances, I think there was a big savings to it. We come out ahead on it, and I would probably be in favor of just dropping it.
Well, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to do exactly that.
Great. Is it seconded? Motion made and seconded. Mark, so is there any further discussion on this motion?
I just, I think it's a good example of what the water tower fund was supposed to be used for, capital improvements with a match, so I'm in favor of it, too.
Any other discussion? How about you, Dave? I'm sorry you didn't get a chance to chime in.
No, it's okay. I was listening.
Okay.
Thank you for passing the phone.
We said it right there.
Oh, great.
Great.
That all makes sense.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're very welcome.
Can we see the windows?
Great.
Oh, Sarah, are we going to see the windows this fall, we hope?
We're about to place the order for the storm windows that will go on the exterior that will be transparent, not opaque.
Not opaque, yeah.
So, once the windows are repaired and they're lit from the inside, then fingers crossed, by the Christmas season or the first of the year, those will light the nights in Virgin's.
That'd be beautiful. The first one is done on the inside, so we would welcome to have anybody come in and see the work that was done. I think we have the keys to the kingdom, so we might give them in, right?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving along, EVSE charging station.
Okay, so, we had applied this spring for a grant opportunity through the Vermont Department of Housing and Development for charging stations at City Green near the information booth. Unfortunately, that could be a very highly competitive grant with over 91 municipalities applying, and we did not receive the grant, which has actually turned out to be a good thing. Green Mountain Power has come forward with a new program that would basically, for the cost of the annual electricity and the installation only, put a charging station right where we wanted to put it. So they'll buy the equipment, we would internalize the installation work, there would be the cost of a licensed electrician, and then they're estimating that the annual usage is about $360 a year. From a budget standpoint, I don't have any concerns about internalizing the work, and for electricity on the City Green last year, we had $260 surplus. So, you know, we're within striking range of being able to do it. There might be a slight overage based on usage, but I think it's going to be, you know, we may be $100 over on that line item at the end of the year, if it gets used, $25 worth of electricity a month.
So, they're not going to be charged for using it?
They cannot be charged. So that was one of the things that was going to offset the expense for us, Lynn, on the grant program, was we were going to have a modest charge. We can't make money on it, but it would just offset the expense. We were on the hook for $1,200 to buy, that was our end of the match. And so now, we don't have to buy it, but we do have to pay the electricity, which, again, I think is going to be about $360 a year. If we can secure this, Green Mountain Power would love to have a kickoff event here at the end of September, September 28th or so, kind of showcasing Virgin's as their newest recipient.
Excellent. Is this the level one, two, or three target?
It's a level one. But my thought, Mark, is that when we lay the conduit, you know, we'd make it large enough to be able to, A, increase from one to two in the future, maybe make a bank of them, and to upgrade the line as well, if it came to that.
Seems like such a...I'm surprised at how low that dollar amount is for the year.
For the electrical usage?
Yeah.
It's, they're averaging $25, $30 a day, or a week, rather, a month, excuse me, a month, geez.
A month?
Yeah, so, it's not huge.
The level one is just kind of trickling.
Yeah.
It takes about 20 hours for a car to fully charge on level one.
So, to that point, Mark, there are timers, it's an app-based usage, and there are timers...
That's why it's not that much electricity. Level two will charge the same car about six hours, and the level three will charge it in about 45 minutes.
Right.
So, is it, would be Green Mountain Power branded?
I don't have that information. It's actually a private entity that's working on behalf of Green Mountain Power that brought the information to Mayor Fritz and myself.
PowerPoint?
What's that?
PowerPoint?
No, it's an individual.
So, I don't see many people using it, if it's going to take 20 hours to charge.
Well, if you're just going to shop around for a couple hours.
Yeah, or if you can leave there overnight.
I mean, it would be...
But you can't park there in winter.
You can, and I actually, one of my questions, Bill, was can a timer be put on it so that it is shut off from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM? So no one's parking there and getting full juice overnight, which it can, which we can do.
Another concern would be if you go up to a level three, your costs are going to probably increase substantially.
Well, level three requires $440. So it's serious wiring, but the level two is only a $220, which is standard.
Right.
I don't think we need a level three, but a level two is...
In the future.
Yeah, the purpose is really, almost emergency basis, like they're not going to make it to Middlebury unless they can get a bump somewhere. There was an existing unit at DR, they pulled it when they moved out. There are a few down at Collins', but those are for employee use only. So, there is a need within the community, but really, we're looking to maximum two or three hours and then send them on their way.
I'll make a motion to approve it, just start the ball rolling.
Yeah? What's the, how are people finding out about the charging stations, and is there a risk of increased demand greatly, suddenly?
As I understand it, Ray, it is an app-based usage. So, we would get, we would pop up on a map and say your closest charging station is 22A and...
So, in other words, is that already happening?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
One more question, because I don't remember where you're going to put this. Is it taking a parking space?
It is taking one parking space adjacent to...so as you turn onto North Green, Lynn, there's hash marks, and then there's a handicap space. It's right on the other side of that handicap space, or the handicap space may move one, because we do want it to be visible for Main Street. We want people to know it's there and use it as an asset.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you.
Northlands Job Corps 40th Anniversary Celebration.
Yeah, so Northlands Job Corps is celebrating their 40th anniversary here in our community. They have requested a use of the City Green on October 2nd from 10:00 to 6:00. The first and last hours would be for setup and takedown, but they would be providing refreshments, having students discuss, you know, their experience at Northlands, and obviously, their staff would be on hand to orchestrate the celebration. So I'm seeking approval from the city council to permit them on August, October 2nd from 10:00 to 6:00.
Great.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Have they had any demonstrations of things they do, or is just...
I'm not sure. I think they're waiting for approvals, and then they'll, we'll get an agenda put together.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sewer rate increase.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is for discussion purposes, and I'm going to have you take that conversation.
Okay, great. So this is an issue that we actually talked about when we were first discussing our budget back in June, or earlier, I guess it was. One thing that we need to consider is to have the ability to have funds in reserve to take advantage of any potential project that may come our way as we address our sewer issue. Therefore, it seems very prudent, since we have no capital reserve fund to speak of in the sewer department, that we begin building that. And therefore, I requested of a city clerk treasurer and the city manager to determine how much we would raise annually if we increased our sewer rates to 150 a quarter. And that would net us about $55,000 a year, which is a pretty good nest egg for us to put aside. That is the lead-in to this discussion.
Ms. Curly?
106.
Let me ask this, how many, how many delinquent sewer bills are there?
Letters have gone out, we are chasing.
I understand that, but, you know, it's always an indication that's difficult, so, you know.
A lot of what the delinquent sewer is about, it's not escrow, it's your mortgage company, so they use that as a cash flow. You know, they'll throw us 300, you let it bill up to 400, it's, that's how they play with sewer assessment.
Who, the people or the mortgage holder?
Property owner.
Okay.
Yeah. But these property taxes, they're escrow. Those accounts are all fine, but you look at them and they have delinquent sewer, delinquent sewer, delinquent sewer, and, you know, it's a game they play. You know, they'll get a letter from Matt, they'll throw me 500 bucks towards a $900 bill or something, and then they'll let it bill back up until we throw out another letter. It bothers them.
Is that even the last time that the rate structure was actually, not just the quarterly amount, but the way the entire structure was created? I mean, Bob brought a good point earlier, we were talking about, you know, usage, water coming in, water going out. I made an example, you know, I pay a commercial rate for my office, which has a toilet and two and a half employees, the same as someone that might have 10 employees.
Sure.
You know, and I don't know, I'm wondering if we shouldn't revisit potentially the structure of that revenue source, which we might be able to get the $50,000 without increasing the delinquencies.
We've talked about that in the past, and I would agree. I've never thought that the way that we structure it makes sense, particularly relative to commercial properties, but even so, I mean, you know, you have a situation where, you know, there's some people that are probably paying significantly more than their share and others that aren't even beginning to get close, but beyond that, I think that we need to do something. I think that it's imperative for us to get in a position where we address this. It's an embarrassment.
Well, I think the law does address it, and we've looked at that before.
Usage?
Based on units. What is a unit?
But even beyond that, I think what Bob is getting at, and from my perspective, it's water in, water out, and...
Well, then you'd have to be metered, and...
We meter water.
You'd have to have an agreement with Virgin's brand.
But, but the thing is, is based on units, it's still, you know, you have situations where you, and I've spoken with residents that own multi-unit dwellings, and that's their concern, you know, relative to what it is that they're paying.
I don't think it's rocket science. I think other communities have had the same problem. Maybe we should start by looking at some other communities.
Sure.
With municipal sewer rates and see how they do it, and then put that on an agenda going forward. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just think this is an opportunity to do it. If we can improve the system, let's try and do it.
As an example, I mean, you would have, say, you know, under the current formula, you'd have a dry cleaner paying the same amount as bill, or restaurants. I mean, restaurants use a lot of wastewater capacity.
And they pay by the gallon.
They...
We get them.
Understood, but there's no reason that we shouldn't extend that across the board. I think that that would make a lot of sense.
Well, the other issue to remember is that that would also require a great deal of administration. And what we don't have is an overabundance of administrative personnel.
I'm not...
I'm skeptical about the metering. I'm skeptical about the metering.
I'm, I'm not sure it, I mean, you know, if we could work out something with the Water District, I mean, I'm not sure it's that complicated. We don't know.
We don't know, but it's also important to remember that, that sewage out is more than the water in.
Understood.
So, you know, there has to be some way that we also address that issue as well.
So how do restaurants do it?
They're, they're metered. They're, it's a different billing. It's booked too and they get billed every month based on the water readings that Marie forwards to me. There's like 27 accounts, somewhere around there, which is like the laundromat, Job Corps, Simmons, the high-end water users.
How do you define high-end versus basic?
Based on a, based on a water reading. If they use more than 6,000 gallons a month, they're considered a high water user, you know, laundromat.
I didn't realize that. That's, that makes sense.
Yeah, and our last study we had done is back when Rennie Perry was here, so that's probably 15 years ago, when we did a sewer increase then, they came and did a study for us that's somewhere around our offices.
Who's the they?
Force your analogy.
Okay. So when we raised the, the rates, is the formula different for the commercial units? Are they adjusted accordingly or?
Yep, yep, and the out-of-town users are billed accordingly. They pay, the formula's written out in our sewer ordinance that was written in '73.
On a manual paper.
And it, it explains how their billing is. It used to be minus the bonded debt and one and a half times. So it's basically one and a half times of what in-town users pay. So they have a, a pay rate for them and their gallonage, excess gallonage, is higher than the in-town excess gallonage.
So there already is a system set up from the Water Department to the City of Virgin's?
For the high-end water users, yes.
So it's all set up, really?
Yeah.
So is it going to be that much of a difference?
Small scale.
Yeah, it's 27 units. I mean, there could be some habits using three times the amount that a single person's using and they're paying the same rate. There are inequities. They're out there for sure.
Could we just find what a high-end user is, let's say 6,000 gallons.
Anyone over 6,000?
Right, but we could say, well, we're going to say it's 3,500 gallons. And by that, we're going to charge you different or, you know, find out what, what an average residential home of four people uses on it. Because I remember seeing 6,000, I was like, wow, I could just leave the tap running all the time and I'm not going to hit my 6,000.
Never flood the backyard for a nice night, fill up the.
So that, that information's available from Virgin's. So we, we could look at the gallonage usages and, and see if, if that kind of changed, what it would do in terms of revenue and administration and so on and see, you know, what's, what's worth doing, what isn't.
If they're able to separate their billing. Their billing includes all over the place and just pull out Virgin's.
Right.
It could give you an idea if that's possible.
Or we get that data and we could look at it and pull it ourselves, you know, just.
Having been on the Board of Virgin's Pan Water District.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would remind everyone that their systems are not terribly sophisticated and.
They have the same system.
Right.
Nimret. They came in and handwrote.
And what's happening now is Maria knows those 27 users.
Yeah.
I don't think there's.
And has on a spreadsheet.
Exactly. So there's not like a little button that is pushed. I mean, those have been, that's information that's in her head. So it's probably available. We can probably look at it. I'm not really sure what it's going to tell us, but we can certainly ask the question.
When was the last time the sewer rates were raised? Was it 15 years ago?
No.
Oh, no.
I was.
Probably two years ago.
I think it was six months before that.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so they, they have been adjusted recently.
As recently as two years?
Yeah.
Yep.
A large percentage increase.
It was.
It was. This would be.
This would be.
6.50. This would be 40%. I mean, that's a.
Yeah, this one is much more significant. I think the other one was only $10.
It was.
Yeah.
I, I would imagine that we're all on the same page relative to the need to do something relative to the facility. Okay, so that's out of the way. And then it's just a question of how much and how do we do it?
Right, and who?
And who?
That's the other piece of this puzzle.
So I, I think that I wouldn't necessarily back totally away from looking at usage because I think that that's the fairest and most equitable way to do it. And, you know, people pay for what they use.
Let's try and collect some data if we can, you know, and if you have some, if there's a way even to get a, some kind of a printout, I'd be happy to go through it and look at it, just then we can continue to talk about it till we come up with.
We'll keep it on the agenda.
Okay.
I think my concern would be that huge increase for 55,000 is a nice chunk of change for something, but it's, it's a single part of the sewer line. When things go bad, we're talking millions of dollars, so having 55,000 is a nest egg is not that much.
So you're looking at a bond issue.
Yeah, so to put residents through financial turmoil and to have a lot more defaults for a nest egg, it's not really going to be able to solve any serious problem that's going to come up, doesn't seem like a win.
The other thing I'd like to see is, and the research that I have done indicates that our sewer rates are incredibly low, not just nationally, but for Vermont. So if we could see a comparison of that, I think that would be really helpful. And we also know that the water rates, which we have nothing to do with, are also very low, even for the state of Vermont. So let's use that information to move forward.
Okay.
And keep this alive because we, we need to get this resolved, I think, before the end of the year. It would be great to give people as much notice as we possibly can. All right, moving along to item E, which is the Sevita. I didn't write down the full.
Sevita and the pending application for the DRB.
Yes.
Okay. So it's my understanding that, that Sevita has intent to occupy building down the street. What's the number?
210.
210 Main Street. And that there is a public hearing scheduled relative to that, which is a change in use from retail to office. And I received communication today from Chief Merkel. I'll ask him to communicate what occurred today.
A representative from Sevita stopped in today and I said he stopped in to chat with us about Sevita and the services they provide. And during the conversation, she gave us a brochure, gave us her calling card and Sergeant Latt and I were chatting with her and she said, we're opening up on Monday. And that kind of surprised me. And I thought maybe they're just setting up all this, you know, we're, we open the business as of Monday and that people need to start making, or would like to start making appointments or they could do that now. And that took me by surprise, but, so I talked to Matt, talked to Dave, and I just felt need to report that because that kind of sounded.
Was that Helene or Sharon? Remember, Helene Murphy?
Helene Murphy.
Yeah, okay. But she told me they were going to open up September 16th and I know what, been going over the DRB and I'm thinking, you, you can't do that, it's a public hearing. I'm amazed that's what they told you.
Well, they're, they're opening, they're opening their doors and if you look on their website, it said, could be announced. And then that kind of took me by surprise when I heard that. Again, I thought maybe something had happened that I didn't know about, so I figured it reported to you guys.
So.
I'm all of you.
Thank you, Chief. So based on that and based on the fact that it is a change in use and that there's, there's definitely a few and there's probably more folks that may want to have an opportunity to testify at that hearing. And that, you know, it's usual and customary here in the city of Virgin's for uses not to commence until a permit is in hand. I, I don't know whether we want to communicate to them or wait till Monday and have someone go down there and communicate to them and possibly the owner of the property that that's not acceptable. And that, and that if it's, if, if they're prudent, they would wait until the appeal period. That's, that's the prudent thing for someone to do, particularly in this instance.
Isn't the owner of the property the one that gets the permit is responsible for that?
I, I don't know. I haven't.
That's what I would think, yeah.
I, I don't know. I, in some instances, a tenant is a co-applicant. I don't know.
I don't know either, yeah.
I don't know. But I, I just found that unusual and disturbing.
Thank you for that.
So what are we going to do? Because this can't, this cannot start without proper hearings and what people have to say and the downtown has to have something to say about it.
When is that meeting, the hearing scheduled?
Monday night.
Monday.
Monday night.
Monday night.
And they're opening Monday?
They're, they're opening Monday and there's an appeal, and in the event that they're granted a permit, there is an appeal period of, I believe, 15 days.
Right.
After that, so.
Well, someone should communicate that to them, I think.
Is it communicated to them? Because I think.
Or to the property owner.
The owner is the owner.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a penalty in the, in the DRB regulations.
Sure, if they do not have, I don't have the specifics, Bill, but if they open without the appropriate permit, the landlord is responsible and there are fines assessed.
I guess I'll just look into that. Hopefully there's some teeth in them.
Right.
Can we direct Peter to do that? To contact whom?
I, I would say.
The landlord and. Sure, absolutely.
Both the owner and the potential tenant.
Right.
Absolutely.
Do we all agree with that?
Yes.
Do we have verification or knowledge that this is, this is going to be constantly reserved?
I don't know.
There's no, no, they've, they've made it very clear that they are not dispersing medicine, prescriptions only.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a brochure, I'll pass it on to Matt, I'm sure they brought it up, but she relayed to us today that it's not only dispensing of, of medication, it's going to be strictly, they will issue a script and then we'll get it somewhere.
Last time we talked about this, that was the assumption, but no one knew for sure. So now we know.
I understand, but that's.
Okay, I think we're in agreement to communicate to Peter, to communicate with the property owner.
Understood.
And the potential tenant.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't disagree.
Not a good plan. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
City Managers Report.
This is, my first topic today is regarding this salt shed. So we had, we put out an RFP for a project manager for the salt shed down off next to the recycling center. And I just want to go through the original math so I can get everybody updated. The city is responsible for a match of $64,281 in order to secure the grant. We allocated, the council allocated $62,527 from the West Main Street Improvement Fund that we had held for over 15 years. I had proposed to the council that the remaining $1,754 could probably be taken out of the DPW budget four years from now when this actually starts to be built. When we put out the RFP, we only had one respondent. And as such, we're kind of, we're obligated basically to either accept their management proposal or, or deny to put out another RFP. Their portion of the management of the, of the execution of the grant came in $14,098.27 higher than what had been budgeted by V-Trans. Okay? So now we are at, you know, over nearly $16,000 delta between, you know, the original conversation and where this is, has come in. I'm not certain that I can budget in $16,000. So my request of the council would be that in year four, when our portion comes due, that we would take $14,000, I'm sorry, $16,000 out of the Water Tower Fund to offset the difference. I know there's a lot of numbers there, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to drill into that for you.
So you have one response?
Correct.
Is that typical?
There was a lot of inquiries, but only, we thought we had at least two that we knew were going to. DNK was one and we thought another local entity was going to and they chose not to participate. There is an inherent risk apparently in putting the RFP out a second time. Because either you lose your first and maybe you end up with none, or it just gets convoluted. So V-Trans is advising that we do not do that.
So will we put the $16,000 aside now?
I don't, we wouldn't need to, no. As I said, you know, in my mind, you know, everything's lined up and there's no right of way, there's no easements, there's no, I'm, I'm thinking this thing was going to be out, you know, by September of this year, because there's just not a lot of issue. We already know exactly what it is, but they're saying it's going to be three to four years.
We're still looking at $100,000 annual revenue from the Water Tower Fund, so as long as you block that in for year 2019, or 2022 or something, there should be plenty of.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, that's, you know, that's the, as you said earlier, the benefit of the Water Tower Fund is, you know, we, as budget, decided to allocate or encumber $12,500 over four years for the West Main Street paving, sidewalk project. So we can certainly do that. And it just, it may be that I come back to the council next year and say, actually, this is going to be done in 2021, not 2022, and we would have to pull it forward, but, you know, just a quick sidebar on the Water Tower Fund, we are still working through a new lease agreement with T-Mobile and that's going to be an additional $22,500 the first year, so.
Right.
I would say just for county corporates, the same way we did the sidewalk project, it would probably be good to encumber $4,000 each year just so that we know when we get to year four, it's there. We haven't spent it on other things because we forget about it and suddenly other things come up like, oh, the Water Tower.
Sure. If that's the guidance of the council.
Is that what you'd like to do?
I think that just makes.
Yeah.
Prudent sense to just make sure that at least parts of it, we're going to push this for four years, then each four years.
You're going to get all the final numbers are, we just, we just cancel it out with the amount that negates it?
Well, we do four, 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 and then on the fourth year, maybe it's $2,000, maybe it's $8,000, whatever. Just to at least put a little something aside so we know that money is there.
Is that a motion? I think we should have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded.
Did you find a motion or should I actually word something there?
Yeah. Give me a.
Move to encumber $4,000 a year for four years to cover the cost of our share of the salt shed.
Great.
Good.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. V-Trans Bike and Pedestrian Grant.
Okay, so we had applied again for another grant in the spring for the, we had two grants. One was a large-scale construction grant for the west, for the main, Main Street sidewalk extension going from McDonough down past the Benton's Place to connect to the basin stairs. At the same time, we had applied for a small-scale construction grant for wayfinding signs in the basin. So that was $2,000 and then the West Main Street end of ours was $50,000. We got the large-scale construction grant, which was great. They did not give us the small scale, small-scale grant, but they rolled it into the large scale. So we got $202,000 in that grant versus the $200,000 that we had asked for. Okay? So win-win all over the place. So that's just an announcement. So that's just an announcement. Again, we got the big grant plus two thousand, but we did not get the small-scale construction grant. So it's a FYI.
Great. Is that the, someone that Mike did through Urbanism Planning?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Farmers market.
Farmers market. So Chris Rec was kind enough to share the fact with me that they are estimating that they are going to do fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars in sales, the total revenue from the vendors on the City Green this year. This is more than twice what they had done previously at Kennedy Brothers. And they are just ecstatic with the season that they had, in spite of a wet spring, they've, everyone's delighted there. There are several vendors that are looking for a winter farmers' market opportunity. So we're working with Chris and Sandy Rec to try to find them a location to get through the winter and then they would love to come back to the City Green in the spring. So as you're going through on a Thursday night and there's no parking and it's kind of bedlam getting through town, it has really paid off nicely for the city.
That's great.
Love to see him go to seventy.
That's exerting.
Yeah.
Those of us.
All right.
Trying to get my brother.
They've been terrific to work with David. I'll absolutely bring that to their attention.
Anyone else has had that problem, but I've missed out on a lot of it.
Sure.
I've gone there two thirty and lost some of the trucks before too. Because I can't go there later.
All right. Moving along.
Okay, stump dump, last day is October fifth. Again, that's been very well-used this season and my thanks to Jim and the DPW guys for making that on Saturdays for us. Just a public service announcement.
Excellent. And budget update.
Budget update, so the period three budget was given to everybody in their packet. Just wanted to share some comments. In the revenue portion, we are chasing the state of Vermont for our police department fines going back to June still at this point, right, Joan? Yep, so we have not really even been able to close out twenty nineteen because we're waiting on revenue from the state. I know that Joan and the other clerks in the state are hounding the entities that control that money to get it. So you'll see, there's just nominal progress on this, but it's not due to, you know, anything going on with our force. If we get into the budget itself, you know, I look at things that spike over, you know, the overall trend or over, you know, the percentage of total for the Department General Operations Administration right now. The bottom line, IT tech, you'll see that at thirty-seven point six nine percent. There's a lot of upfront costs associated with our conversion. So this is, you know, we had allocated additional money this year for these, to migrate from a server to the cloud-based. So there's just been some upfront and this should be done by the end of November. The conversion should be done. An unrealized opportunity has arisen that we anticipate saving ten thousand, eight hundred dollars annually based on this conversion. So upfront, there was a lot of, you know, how much this is going to cost and they really weren't that firm with what we would be saving. But, you know, in two years' time, we'll be paying off that initial twenty thousand dollar investment. And I think that's going to come in under budget as well, so that's, that's good news. Everything else is looking, you know, good. General expenses, we received a new contract from Virgens Area Rescue Squad. It was slightly higher than we had budgeted, slightly higher than in past years, fifteen hundred, sixty-four dollars over what we had budgeted. So we're at a hundred and eight percent there, but that's going to hold at this point. And then we just discovered that our contract with Consolidated Communication, who handle our phone lines, apparently we had promotional pricing for a three-year period that has expired. So our phone bills have jumped three hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents a month. So we are going back to Consolidated to try to offset that forty-six hundred dollar potential impact to our budget. It's just, we have to, we've got to get that back down where it was, or we need to find a different vendor. So that's just, you may see that kind of spike over the next two months, but we are actively pursuing getting that straightened out. That's the majority of my comments regarding budget, but I would be happy to field any questions as well.
Questions? Paul's question.
Yeah.
What is it, encumbrance means?
So we know that we have resources and revenue and as Alderman Conie said, we don't want to spend that inadvertently. So the council at budget said approves for me to take twelve thousand, five hundred dollars annually out of the Water Tower Fund. So as I'm setting them up to spend more money, it's going to be that amount minus twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Even though it's sitting in the fund, it's just encumbered meaning we're not going to spend it on anything else.
Okay, so I understand that now. So suppose we're building a salt shed, we've encumbered now, that, is that because we are expecting to recognize the cost of the salt shed four years hence? Or because we are recognizing?
No, that's correct. So it's going to take several years for the project to come to fruition. And instead of me coming to the council in four years and saying, "I need fifty thousand dollars," we were in front of it and said, "Let's take twelve, five a year, set it aside, and then we'll have our fair, our share of the match when, when it's necessary."
Okay, and then on the same topic, when it comes to a sewage project, it could be millions of dollars in an emergency, do we have lines of credit as well?
That typically is done through a municipal bond.
So a bond, well, that's different than a line of credit though, obviously, because a bond you would have to pass before you'd be able to spend any of it, right?
Correct.
So that's what I'm asking, is there, do cities do that? Is that like a possibility in the event of a sewer emergency or a line of credit?
There's no alternative than a bond when we.
Okay, so there is no credit?
Well, not for that.
Not for that kind of money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's thirty, you know, we're, it's going to be in the thirty million dollar range when we get this thing built, so. And municipal bonds tend to have favorable rates and favorable terms because, you know, thirty million dollars, you know, is fifteen of our budget cycle, so it's traditionally how these are handled.
And the revenue stream is pretty much guaranteed, so.
Correct.
Always going to flush.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I hesitate to say this, but I do believe I have gotten someone who will be chairing our succession planning committee. I hope to be able to make that announcement at our next meeting, but finally, that's actually going. We continue to have conversations with the Virgens Partnership about the local option tax. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll be bringing some information to the council on that.
I was going to ask you if there was a timetable for that.
We, yeah, we're, we're on top of it. We're very conscious that we need to not, we need to stay on top of it. And that's about all I have. Any comments from anybody else?
Just as I said, the school board met last night. Two hundred and fifty people were the auditorium of the high school discussing the restructuring possibilities. We have tabled the vote on what to do until Friday, the twenty-second. There is a, there are community forums on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. One of them is in Ferrisburg and one is in Addison. I don't remember which is the twenty-fifth and sixth, but it's available. There'll also be one on October eighth here in Virgens. But A, we needed to get ahead of when those other two select committees were going to next meet so they could warn if they need to, a vote in November. And Virgens doesn't have a vote in this, so learning after the fact of the vote is not as important as making sure that Ferrisburg and Addison, who are directly impacted, really understand what the ask is. So just to keep you up.
I just have a question, I don't mean to put you on the spot. One of the questions I've been unable to field is, you know, what is the, you know, what's the potential savings if the action is taken to close Ferrisburg and Addison? And is it a one-time or is it something that we're going to appreciate, you know, for several years? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
So rough numbers right now, if we keep the two buildings, if the two municipalities do not want them, then we would save in the neighborhood of one point nine million dollars, I guess. If we don't have the buildings anymore, it's about two point three million dollars. Some of that savings will continue because, you know, we will only have two food service groups instead of four, so that, we're not going to gain that back. But costs still go up and costs, you know, fuel goes up and people get raises and healthcare is going to skyrocket. So it will eventually do, but we're hoping once we're all on one campus and working together that way, we can really focus on streamlined programming, get better options for the students and find things that aren't fixed cost savings. So this is a, this is a big save in the beginning, but what's going to be in five or six years? I don't know. I mean, we'd like to say that we're going to continue to save, but in no way are we saying taxes are going down.
Right.
What's the percentage of the total budget that that two million dollars is? What's the total budget this year?
Twenty-one five.
It was ten percent.
If we don't do anything, we need to find a million plus to cut this year. And then if we don't do anything again, we're looking at over two million the next year.
The next year.
And that's programming. There's nothing else to cut. So there won't be sports, there might not be buses, there might not be the theater, band, or AP classes.
Is this true for Addison Northwest or statewide?
The whole state is in trouble except for South Burlington, it's building a new high school because they have extra kids. But in any small community, they're all hurting. You've got Addison Central, who's trying to figure out, they've got nine or ten buildings and, you know, they've been going through the same process in a slightly different way. They've been bringing consultants, they've spent over three hundred thousand dollars on consultants to try and help them figure out what to do. And their communities are still mad at them.
Right.
They're getting the same kind of things from Ripton and Bridgeport and.
Isn't legislature hearing this, though? Hearing about these problems?
Hearing and caring.
No, I know, but I just, you know, but it's been discussed for years and years and years, I.
Yeah, so what came up in last night's meeting was, well, we need to change the law. Like, that's great, but it doesn't help us on the next budget cycle.
Right, right. Wow, okay.
So just to.
Thank you.
Can I add one? Is anyone ever talking about increasing the population? Or is it always just how to restructure to accommodate the population loss effectively?
Okay, well, if you want to bring in people, that would be great. And everyone's talking about it, but.
They are, at these meetings.
What do you, what are you proposing? Because I've had people say, "Yes, you know, I've got families moving in, there's three more families on my block." Let's just say for sake of argument that we bring in a hundred families to the region, right? Each had two kids, spread out all over the grades, we've got two hundred new students coming in. In three years, that'll mean we were, we're at the population we were three years ago. So we've brought in a hundred families, which is not going to happen in a recent thing, for two hundred kids, which is not really going to change our demographics that much. We're at, in two thousand and three, we had about thirteen hundred kids in the school system. In two thousand and twenty-three, we're estimating seven hundred and fifty. We're going to lose a hundred kids in the next four years of high school. So if we bring in two hundred new kids, we've put that hundred back and we've gone back another hundred. We need eight hundred, a thousand kids. So that's thousands of families that need to move in. There's no place to put them, we don't have that.
How many open jobs is that?
I mean, it would be great if we could do that, but we don't have any place to put them and house them and.
Okay, so then in that theme. What's that?
Unemploy their parents.
Well, so, yeah, and in that theme, though, in other words, what I understand to be the problem essentially is that the number of children per family is decreasing as well as perhaps housing.
That's neither.
Right, okay.
As well as the population moving to rural areas.
Okay. So in terms of housing in this city, do we have housing for even just a hundred more families?
In Virgens?
Yes.
No.
The rental, I think there's, it's like point three percent occupancy open right now. There's, if somebody, anybody that wants to rent in Virgens can't find a place to live.
Okay, so again, this is.
And there are a handful of houses for sale every once in a while, but.
Right. So this is just, again, because people were putting lots of different children in houses that are existing now. And now those rooms are empty or there's only one child per room instead of three, is basically the idea.
Yeah, and families used to have four, five, six, seven kids and now they have one or two. And that's, you know, I'm guilty of that, I've got one and my house has four bedrooms.
So the only comments I'd offer, which are not too concrete, are just that, yeah, obviously, that's the opposite direction of population in this country and obviously in the world as well, so. Okay, very well.
We're dealing with a lot of these issues.
That ultimately need to be addressed and potentially resolved at a national and a state level. And these folks are dealing with the problems here and it's not of their creation.
On that note.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We're saving.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.